Hey Tom, can we get the uh, the mics turned on?
Hear me? Oh, no, not at all. Not even, nothing's working.
There you go.
But this isn't working, they said.
Yeah.
Oh, it's now. Can you hear me now?
Speak up louder.
Okay, can you hear me now? Hi, good evening. Great, I project. Can you hear me now? Okay, great, perfect. Sorry, we were having some streaming issues, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order now. It is um, August fifteenth, the time is five thirty-four. Um, and this is our City of Durango City Council Regular Meeting. Um, can I have a roll call?
Councillor Bosman.
Present.
Mayor Proten Buehler, or Buehler, sorry.
Here.
Councillor Woodruff.
Here.
Councillor Yasi.
Here.
Mayor Yusef.
Um, and just as a reminder, Mayor Yusef had an excused absence. She is doing some family um, business. Um, and so she is away for today's meetings. However, she did ask me to get a photo of all of her pickleball fans and people. And so um, I will grab one potentially right after like public comment if that's okay with you guys. Okay, great. Um, number, we'll move on to item number two, introduction of the translator.
Great, uh, good evening, everyone. Hopefully you can hear me okay. Uh, Diego Ponce here today with my colleague San Guzman as usual from the Community Language Cooperative. Thank you for continuing to have us at your city council meetings. Uh, the organizers of the meeting continue making a commitment to language justice so that everyone can have the space to participate and engage in the language of their heart, the language so each person feels most comfortable in. So we'll continue using simultaneous interpretation here on the Zoom space to have, create the space in English and in Spanish. Once I finish saying this in English, as usual, repeat the instructions in Spanish. Then at that moment, we start the interpretation. Once interpretation is on, you'll be able to see that globe icon comes as interpretation there in the bottom right-hand corner of your computer screen. We'll ask you to please select that globe icon and please select your preferred language. And if you happen to be joining the meeting on your cellphone or your tablet, you'll instead be looking for the more button, for the three dots button, so that you can select your preferred language this other way. If you're not fully bilingual, as always, we encourage people to select preferred language so you can utilize the interpretation in case anyone were to speak in the opposite language. And if you are bilingual, then you can just feel free to listen to everyone in the original language. Once you do select a language, you can always choose the original audio if you'd like to do so to not have to hear both languages at the same time. And as always, just please pay attention to the speed in which you're speaking. Just please make sure you're speaking at a conversational pace like this and please make sure you don't pick up your reading speed. So thank you so much for that. Uh, buenas tardes a todos y todas. Mi nombre es Diego Ponce. Estoy aquí con mi colega Sam Guzman otra vez de parte de la Cooperativa Comunitaria de la Justicia al Lenguaje, CLC. Como siempre, gracias por continuar invitándonos a esta reunión. Los interesados de esta reunión se han comprometido hoy a servir la justicia al lenguaje. Lo que eso significa es que queremos crear ese espacio para que todos puedan continuar participando y involucrándose en el idioma de su corazón. Simplemente el idioma en el que todas las personas se sientan más cómodas y vamos a continuar hoy utilizando la interpretación simultánea aquí en Zoom para crear ese espacio en inglés y en español. Ahora cuando ya termine de decir esto, vamos a activar la interpretación. Ya con esta activada interpretación, usted va a poder ver ese icono del globo de la tierra que irá a interpretación ahí abajo en la derecha de su pantalla. Vamos a ver que por favor seleccione ese icono del globo de la tierra cuando aparezca en su pantalla y por favor seleccione su idioma preferido. Pero si usted está asistiendo hoy a la reunión en su celular o en su tableta, por favor, busque la opción que dice more, que quiere decir más, o posiblemente el botón de tres puntos para que pueda seleccionar su idioma preferido de esta otra manera. Si usted no es completamente bilingüe, como siempre, le vamos a aconsejar que seleccione su idioma preferido para que pueda utilizar interpretación cuando alguien está hablando en el otro idioma. Pero si usted sigue es bilingüe, se puede sentir o escuchar a todos hoy en su idioma original. Y como siempre, cuando usted selecciona su idioma, puede hacer clic en silenciar el audio original para no escuchar ambos idiomas al mismo tiempo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Okay, item number three, opening remarks by mayor and council. Um, I, I don't have much on this item if any other councillor wants to jump in, but um, we did tour the new, the city council toured the new um, Durango Mesa Bike Park um, area out there and kinda looked at the phase construction plan they have going on. Um, and then the seven miles of new trails that are about to open, which were phenomenal and super fun, so kinda keep your eye out for the opening of those trails. Um, does it, any other councillors have any opening remarks?
Um, yes, I went and it was very beautiful up there. And one thing that I was impressed with is they're gonna go ahead and do one adaptive sports um, trail for um, for um, people who need assistance using the trails. And I think it's gonna be a really great addition to um, our athletical store here in Durango.
Okay, moving on, um, number four, presentations, proclamations, we have none tonight. Um, number five, city manager updates.
No update tonight.
Okay, number six, we're just moving right along. Uh, committee, board and liaison reports. Did anyone attend any meetings? Okay, councillor Woodruff.
Yes, I had the Chamber of Commerce meeting this morning uh, with Jack and Kim over there. Um, obviously the chamber's got a lot of really great things going on right now. Um, the Durango Rocks nominations are up um, at DurangoBusiness.org. So um, they're eager to get some great individuals, nonprofits and businesses nominated for this year's awards. Um, it's really incredible just to become nominated for some of those awards, much less uh, win an award. So it's a, it's definitely a really great opportunity to celebrate uh, so many great people and businesses and nonprofits in our community. Um, they spoke also about potentially supporting the Hermosa to Durango Bike Trail advocacy effort and getting that started and across the finish line. So, you know, writing a possible letter of, um, a letter of advocacy for that. And then probably the, the, one of the cooler things was Karen Chester from Nine R spoke to the Workforce Recruitment and Retention Task Force. Um, and updates regarding the trades at Durango High School. Along with the Impact Career uh, Innovation Center, they're implementing a workforce platform connecting students in schools with businesses for job shadows, workplace learning, etc. So um, we, we all know some of the business um, headwinds that we've got right now and workforce recruitment and retention is a big part of that. So being able to cultivate and grow some of the talent uh, right here in our community is critically important. So good to see that we're, you know, kinda spearheading something new in our community. So, thank you.
Any other councillors?
No. Um, yes, I had a busy um, week. Um, I started off last week, I did a um, KSUT radio um, interview, I think it was Wednesday. And then like yesterday, I did an interview with the um, Colorado Sun Newspaper. I visited with the um, Boulevard, Neighborhood Boulevard Association on what, Sunday, and had a good opportunity to speak to a lot of the residents about their concerns. I attended the um, RHA, which is Regional Housing Alliance Board Meeting. Last week, we were still formulating ideas of how to proceed with providing attainable housing for the area. And a lot of stuff's on the um, the board here, but we talked about that Prop one, two, three, the forty percent buy-in and how we qualify for that award. Um, so we're gonna be able to provide, I think it was a hundred and eighty-four um, affordable units in the next three years. Let's see, what else? Um, oh, and I went to the nine hour, um, they had a training last week that I attended and it had to do with, they were um, reaching out to the indigenous people. So I went to their training for three days at Escalante um, school and I received a certificate that I'm a qualified person to teach traditional stick games. So I'm gonna be working with um, the parent groups here to make sure that um, uh, we all try to remain inclusive and diverse and hopefully be able to be a conduit of change for um, communication. That's all.
Um, I had the alliance meeting. Um, we got um, at the alliance meeting, we had a presentation um, from Access Health Systems about their plans for the old Mercury Payment Systems Building that they um, bought and the consolidation that they're going to be doing because they have buildings um, all over Durango, up in the tech center and um, and so just having everything more streamlined and more cohesiveness and teamwork um, under one roof, which I think will be great. Um, Tommy Crosby with our um, uh, community development was there and he gave an update on um, lodgers tax and our creative economy district and that was great too. So those were kind of the highlights for that. Um, okay, anything else under that? All right, next we are going to move to item seven. Um, item seven is public comment. Um, and it is for, this public comment um, section is for agenda items only under sections eight, nine and eleven. Um, and no, not ten.
Oh.
Eleven.
Sorry.
Got moved because land use code, yes. So eight, nine and eleven. Um, if you have public comment on things not listed under those items, that will be taken at um, later on in the meeting, so.
Babe, is there another thing she needs to read about public comment, like a paragraph?
Okay, so public participation. This section of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide comments or ask questions regarding items that are not scheduled for a hearing or public testimony, or that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. City council will not respond to questions from the dais. Citizens should address their comments directly to city council. As this is a hybrid meeting, the avenues for public participation have been adjusted. All written comments received by the city clerk by noon today have been delivered to council and will be summarized in the meeting minutes. Um, we keep public comments to three minutes per agenda item. Um, you will see the timer come up in the corner of the screen. Um, as it's getting closer, it'll get yellow and please wrap up then. Um, so I don't have to interrupt because I don't, I don't wanna interrupt. Um, so first we have uh, Stephen Crandall, um, come on up. And please state your name and if you're a city resident.
I'm not a city resident, I realize I'm a county resident. Um, so thank you city council members for the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of the Colorado, of the Southwest Colorado Pickleball Association. I think many of our members are here tonight. I would like to ask them to stand very quickly. Take the photo. It's eating up my time though, so you gotta give me a minute.
I'll let you go live.
So, no worries, it was great and thank you all for being here. So as you know, the pickleball community of Durango is very supportive of the effort to build public outdoor courts in Snyder Park. The courts, which I understand are part of a larger um, park restoration project, will be a meaningful addition to public access in Durango. So much of life here, as we've already heard today, it's about outdoor access, hiking, biking, climbing and so forth. And but today, the public cannot play pickleball outdoors without access to either a private club or a private court. Free public outdoor courts will remedy that inequity. We understand that the quoted construction costs exceed the budget by a large margin, as I understand it. It is important to remember that the construction costs are part of a larger park revitalization plan that will benefit the entire community. We believe that the project will integrate Snyder Park into the community and downtown, making it a safer and busier park. It will be wonderful to see this lovely park, which is immediately adjacent to the busy River Trail, be more fully utilized by locals and out-of-town guests. The mix of pickleball players and trail users will change the character of the park and will make it more attractive to many people. While the pickleball craze can be a bit of an eye roll, as you can see here, it is a fun and healthy activity that by its very nature creates community. Cortez, Farmington and Pagosa Springs have all built courts in recent years and seem to benefit from the public access to those courts, including organized tournaments and the economic activity they bring. While the city and the city council have many important issues to address, it is my understanding that the funds being used for the courts and park restoration are specifically earmarked by voters for parks and recreation funding. Therefore, I hope the city council will approve this project. Thank you. Okay, I had time to spare. You want another photo? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, John Simpson? Please state your name and if you're a city resident.
My name is John Simpson, eighteen thirty-one, Cresview Drive. I guess I better support pickleball too, I guess. I'm gonna be speaking about three items, so nine minutes. This item is regard to eight, item eight point four point one, appointment of the financial director. I have concern about the timing of the appointment of the financial director and what has occurred the last six months leading up to this. I've been following closely the process after the finance director resigned, immediately following the court order that the city is illegally withholding financial documents. It was known in February that a finance director was going to be needed. A nationwide search could have started in February, but that's not what happened because at almost the exact same time, the city manager in El Paso, Texas, Tommy Gonzalez, would be told he'd be paid for like four more months and then he was no longer welcome to work in El Paso. The ousted city manager in El Paso and our city manager are good friends. Instead of trying to fill the position in March, the city manager did nothing, but gave Devon the acting title. She had that title for about four months, the same amount of time the city manager in El Paso had remaining on his contract with El Paso. While working in El Paso for those four months, the El Paso city manager was also contracted here in Durango to do special projects. Once the city manager in El Paso was officially relieved of his duties, in July, he could accept full-time employment elsewhere, which happened to be in Durango. In July, excuse me, Mark, do you wanna say something? Okay, in July, Devon was then removed from the finance director position so that Tommy could be the finance director and collect a nice salary and benefits. Tommy had to have this director lever position so he could report to Jose directly. Had Tommy reported to someone else, he could not have traveled extensively to interview for jobs. Are there other city employees allowed to take paid time off after one week of work to go look for other jobs? The search for the finance position could have been started six months ago. You're advertising the Parks and Rec Director. I would argue the finance director is more important than the Parks and Rec Director. Given the multiple legal problems in the finance department, the finance director is one of the most important positions and keeping it open so the El Paso city manager could sit in it while he interviewed for his new job in Midland was a poor decision. The finance director should have been advertised six months ago. This is in regard to item eight point four point two.
We're gonna reset the clock real quick, just so you have three minutes.
I'll keep it short, you don't, I don't need that.
Okay.
The modifications to the open record policy could be argued as an amendment to state statutes. The city of Durango already has lost one lawsuit regarding open records. You don't have a very good track record with these issues. Statutes tell you that records must be available for inspection at any reasonable time. This means if you have the record, you must provide it immediately. Statutes do allow you to delay for three days, but only if records are not readily available. The ordinance staff wants you to approve creates another exemption to statute to provide the documents. Only the legislature has the power to amend statute. You should be taking this up with your legislatures. You might also consider that statutes also give you seven days for extenuating certain circumstances, such as the request, if the request involves a large volume of material. The exemption states that a request cannot interfere with the custodian's regular work. What your ordinance could be describing is extenuating circumstances, which means you already have seven days to provide the records. But your resolution now says you only have three days. Anyway, making your own exemptions to statute, especially in the spirit of limiting public input, will only lead to problems in the future. And finally, this is regards to item eleven point one, the budget amendments.
Do you want a full three minutes?
Yes, please.
Okay, if we could restart the clock?
An appropriation ordinance gives a city manager authority to spend money. It tells the city manager, thou shalt not spend more than X in each fund. He then can move money within the fund to any light item he chooses. Pickleball court goes over, you can move some money over there. Given his freedom, he must be clear what his spending limit is, especially since the appropriation ordinance given the, gives the city manager fund level authority, when it should have been written at the department level. When the last council approved the initial appropriation as part of the budgeting process in twenty twenty-three, it showed the expenditures by fund. That was the city manager's spending limit. But the ordinance you see today is not expenditures by fund. The resolution you have today is fund balance change. Does an increase or decrease in a fund balance change mean the city manager can spend more or less? I could argue it both ways. There's an additional confusion you must weigh through due to staff presenting one specific line item of revenues collected so far to date. There's hundreds of light items of revenues, not just one, you must consider. And also, all revenues of twenty twenty-three at this point are estimated. Revenues could still plummet the rest of the year. Charter requires you use your budgeted revenues until you know actual numbers, which actual numbers won't be known until you get your audit next year. The good news is the audit from last year is now complete and you can use those numbers. You know your actual starting fund balance from your audit and you can compare it to your fund balance that you had in your budget. More, more than likely, the fund balances showed in the audit are greater than what you started in your budget. So you can give your city manager more authority to spend. But there's also some funds where you're starting fund balances lower and you'll need to cut your city manager's authority back. Another problem is if you don't know the city manager is on track with his expenditures right now, year-to-date. He initially overestimates his expenditures with the initial budget, saying he'll complete more projects than possible. You should now be decreasing his spending limit to a realistic value. It doesn't matter if a couple new projects popped up, the pickleball courts over budget. You gave him fund level authority and he can move money between projects as he sees fit. The best example of one item authority is this hiring of El Paso city manager. As a consultant, he can legally sign as many contracts as he would like with his friends without your approval until he exceeds his total spending at the fund level. It's hard to tell tonight whether you're increasing his spending limit or decreasing. You should know if you are increasing his spending limit, because once he has the authority to spend it, it's hard to legally stop him. Mayor Protem Buell.
Thank you. Um, is there any, oh yeah.
Mayor Protem, I, I think with the audience in here, it does deserve a response. And I will tell you that there was an email sent and I had responded to it. I have responded to these. I've actually had the city attorney review all of my actions to make sure that I am above board. Uh, Mark, you have reviewed it. Have you found anything that I did that was not incoherent with any policies or anything on that?
This is public comments.
And I didn't accuse you of anything illegal.
I'm sorry, order. Public comment is done. You may sit down, Mr. Simpson. Thank you.
Okay, you guys are, well, he continued to discuss.
Is the city manager, sorry.
Well, hold on, Jose, there's.
Olivier, where I'm looking, I'm the chair of the meeting. I am in the meeting and I'm looking to the city attorney for, for some guidance. Thank you.
It is your general rule for the counselors not to comment after public comment. You always have the ability to change the rules depending on what may or may not get said during public comment. Some specific allegations were made that I have reviewed and don't have merit. And I think the city manager would like to address that and I think it's appropriate.
I agree. Thank you. Continue on.
Thank you. Uh, you know, as I think that he said, as the, as the city attorney said, don't have merit. I have followed just every practice that we have done before when we've hired interims. Uh, I want to express my complete desire and devotion to this community. I would never do anything that was nefarious. I think you have three counselors and I know another counselor who has been kept in line and kept in touch with every step that I've made and the reasons I've made my decisions. I have kept in constant communication with the council of what I was doing with my plan with the, uh, the chief financial officer position. I am happy that Devon is going to be our new chief financial officer, hopefully, pending upon that eight point four point one. Nomination or appointment by the, the city council. I'm sorry, Devon, that this is come to this part of it uh, to take away a crowning moment of promoting someone who is part of our community, who is a Fort Lewis College graduate, uh, who is being promoted uh, into the organization. And I want to make sure that the focus on is really congratulating Devon for all of her hard work uh, on that portion. And if anyone has any questions or would like any more information, my door is always open. I've got nothing to hide and I'd be happy to meet with everyone uh, to discuss anything and questions that you have. Thank you.
Perfect. Is there any, um, virtual public comment?
Uh, no mayor, not, not that I know of on these specific items. We had someone call in um, who is asking to speak, but I don't know whether or not she's speaking on current items or items for the agenda. So I'm gonna put her in later.
Okay, perfect. Then I will close public comment. Um, all right, now we are on item number eight, consent agenda. Um, can we have a reading of the consent agenda?
Items eight point one are approval of meeting minutes. Eight point one point one is the city council regular meeting from July fifth, twenty twenty-three. Eight point one point two is the city council regular meeting from July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Eight point one point three is the city council joint study session with the Southern New Indian Tribe from July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Eight point one point four is the city council regular meeting from August first, twenty twenty-three. Item eight point two is the final reading of ordinance oh, twenty twenty-three fourteen, repealing chapter five, article eight, Durango Local Licensing Authority and Amending Chapter thirteen licenses and business regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango for the purposes of enacting. Items eight point three are adoption of resolutions by consent. Eight point three point one is discussion and possible action concerning an approval of a resolution to amend the twenty twenty-three employee handbook for the purpose of updating in accordance with the Colorado Protecting Opportunities and Workers' Rights Act submitted by Bonnie Kling. Eight point three point two is discussion and possible action to adopt a resolution prohibiting the open carrying of a firearm in City Hall and authorizing the posting of a sign at the public entrance of City Hall informing persons that the open carrying of firearms is prohibited in City Hall. Submitted by city manager Jose Madrigal and city attorney Mark Morgan. Items eight point four are approval of other administrative items. Eight point four point one is the discussion and possible action to approve the chief financial, financial officer appointment. Eight point four point two is the discussion and possible action to approve revisions to the City of Durango Open Records Policy. And eight point four point three is the discussion and possible action to appoint an applicant to the Durango La Plata County Airport Commission.
Excellent. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda or any counselors want to pull items?
So moved.
Second.
I moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Is there any items that want to be pulled though? Do we, no? Perfect. Can I have any discussion or no? Roll call. How does this one work?
This one you don't do public concession because it's on consent, because everyone consents to it. You've already had an opportunity for public comments, so you're good to go forward with the roll call.
Mayor Protem Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef? Mayor, or Counselor Bossman?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Yasi?
Yes.
And just real quick, I want to say hey, thank you to Faye, Ben and Dana for going through that spaghetti bowl of conversation that we had in the lodger's tax and clarifying that in the, uh, the minutes. So thank you. It added a lot more clarity to that conversation. So thanks.
And since it's finally approved, congratulations for Devon. I think he's probably in order.
Yes, congratulations Devon. I know, uh, the mayor isn't here, but you obviously have full council support for your, uh, new position and I'm super excited. Um, I just wanna, I'll just add real quick in here, um. Devon, I've heard nothing but amazing things about you from your staff. Um, the, your growth that you've shown since you started here at the city has been phenomenal. Um, for everyone that's sitting in here, um, Devon has a BA in Business Administration. She's a master degree in Business Management Practice. She has more than ten years experience working in finance for both the private and public spect- uh, sectors. She, she was awarded, um, Government Distinguished Budget for her twenty-two and twenty-three budgets that she submitted. Um, her budget is audited annually by outside independent certified public accountants who concludes that her work is excellent. Um, and she is a fellow Fort Lewis alumni, so of course that.
Wait, I need to say something.
Hang on, just hang on one second. Let me, let me finish. So I just want to say thank you so much for your hard work and dedication to our city and, um, we look forward to all the great things you're gonna do for our organization. So thank you.
And I'm gonna ask that the clerk make a note in minutes that the mayor Protem was speaking under personal privilege. And any other counselors, welcome to do that for fun things like this.
Um, personal privilege. And I'd like to congratulate Devon also, being a Fort Lewis Business School alumni. Um, I understand the difficulty graduating from Fort Lewis College. So I really appreciate the, appreciate the efforts and the diligence that you have shown the, uh, community by providing us with a, um, pretty clean audit, only one little ding on there. And that's really big when you look through all the papers, all the accounts, um, everything on an audit. So I'm, I'm very impressed. So thank you from the bottom of my heart and congratulations.
Okay, we will move on. Um, no item nine because there was nothing pulled from the consent agenda. Um, there's nothing under item ten, land use and development. And so we are now on item eleven, resolutions, consideration of adoption. Um, eleven point one, discussion and possible action concerning a resolution to amend the twenty twenty-three budget for the purpose of budget adjustments to the twenty twenty-three appropriations, um, by Devon Schmidt.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. I'm Devon Schmidt, um, as no longer acting CFO, but CFO for the City of Durango. So thank you very much. Um, tonight I have before you for consideration is the twenty twenty-three, um, mid-year amendments. Um, this item pertains to financial excellence and high performing government in the, um, strategic plan. So this item does incorporate, um, several anticipated budget adjustments for the twenty twenty-three budget. The request is for discussion and possible action to approve the resolution amending the appropriations for the budget in twenty twenty-three. Um, some key focus areas, um, that I will take counsel in the public through this evening are, um, the requests by fund first and foremost. Um, so I'll give some detail about what those requests are and what those entail. Um, what our financial advisory board recommendations are as it pertains to our capital projects. Um, a couple of personnel requests that are requested and, um, what the net effect is on fund balance, um, for each one of the funds. Starting with the budgetary basis of the twenty twenty-two ACFOR, followed by the adopted, uh, revenues, um, adopted amended revenues and, um, adopted expenditures and revenues through that. So, um, bear with me here for a little bit. I'll try to go through this, um, somewhat quickly. So, starting with the general fund, um, there are appropriations that are requested, um, as part of charges and services. Um, these items do relate to some areas, um, such as city council security during meetings, um, a civic plus contract for legal review, uh, capital and project, uh, capital project team does have a few requests as it relates to training. And IT, we're requesting some software customizations. Um, and then there is some city hall security upgrades. For, um, the largest item that is included in this is the contract to exchange real estate of the two, of two thirty-five Camino del Rio and two oh one east or East Twelfth Street. Um, so that is the nine R building, um, transition swap with River City Hall and the Durango Fire Protection District. There are three positions requested, um, in the general fund. One of those is to upgrade an executive legal assistant to, um, from a part-time to a full-time position. Um, there is an open space parks ranger position in there as well as a police service technician, which will be a point five position split with the transportation department. Um, there are other various modifications in the general fund as outlined in the agenda documentation that was posted online. In the housing fund, um, you'll see two requests here. Um, one of those is looking at, um, a reallocation or reappropriation from lodger's tax. The other is, um, interest revenues that you will see, um, throughout the different areas in, um, this request. The reason for including the interest revenues is to date the city is two hundred percent above um, what we had originally budgeted for interest. Um, that is obviously, um, probably a, a national, um, item there that you can see with interest expenses being, or interest revenue being, um, quite a bit higher based on those interest rates. Um, in the two thousand nineteen, uh, street sales tax fund, on this item, the financial advisory board did approve, um, that and I will take counsel through what their, uh, recommendation and approval was for, um, each one of those requests. But we are looking to, um, increase, um, spending in alley reconstruction, um, Rusa Avenue storm drain, crack ceiling, the, uh, crossing upgrades and then some unpaved alleyways. And again, um, all of this documentation is outlined in the, uh, resolution document. Um, for the two thousand fifteen sales tax fund, um, uh, there is an additional appropriation requested in other contracted services for the completion and additional costs and emergencies as it relates to the Chapman Hill ice rink flooring. Um, there is also a request, um, that the financial advisory board did approve as well to decrease the budget for Animus River Trail, um, for County Road two ten and for, um, or I'm sorry, for, uh, Animus River Trail two ten to account for the multi-year timeline. Um, in the two thousand five parks, open space and trails fund, um, I believe this is what has brought our community out this evening. Um, there is an appropriate creation request to decrease the smart one sixty to account for, um, the reassessed project timeline. Um, and there's an additional appropriation requested to allow for the design, construction and completion of Schneider Park um, upgrades, which does include pickleball courts. Um, again, this has been reviewed and approved by the financial advisory board. In the airport fund, we have, um, some additional appropriations that are requested in other contracted services to allow for completion, additional costs and emergencies associated with conducting an aircraft de-icing facility feasibility study. Um, so that is included in there as well as a few other items. And the transportation services fund, um, an appropriation is requested to increase, um, a state grant. Um, so that is one item that is in there as well as additional appropriations for that split police services technician for security at the transportation facility. In the water construction fund, um, we have a couple appropriations that are requested in there that include, um, emergencies associated with the wild tat, wild tank improvements and the, um, filter affluent to waste system. And the water fund and appropriation, um, is requested for the gateway pipeline and giggle and golt emergency repair as well as a utilities design project manager. Um, and I will go into detail a little bit further about what some of the position requests are. The sewer construction fund is requesting additional appropriation, um, for Skada's cybersecurity improvements. Um, a liner replacement, an operator workstation remodel and a water line replacement. In the sewer fund, um, this is the other split for the utilities design project manager requested as well as, um, other capital repair for rotary press. And then finally, in the capital improvement fund, um, this is the appropriation requested to, uh, increase revenues as a transfer from the general fund for the, um, purchase of the nine R building. Um, this will allow, um, should council and the voters approve to reauthorize the O five sales tax um, to see that entire project cost, um, in one area. So moving on to what the financial advisory board, um, reviewed, so this is related to the dedicated sales taxes. So in the two thousand five, um, open space parks and trails, the financial advisory board approved and, um, approved the requested adjustments to the two thousand five sales tax fund, which is a reduction of one million to the smart one sixty trail budget and an increase to one million to the pickleball and Schneider Park improvements project for a total of one point nine million. This motion did pass unanimously through the financial advisory board. The two thousand fifteen sales tax, um, parks, recs and multimodal, um, the financial advisory board did approve this increase to the community forest plan by an addition of sixty-five thousand for a total of a hundred and forty thousand. All were in favor and the most in passed. Um, there was also a request for Chapman Hill to increase the project so that they could do the small tow rope and the large tow rope all at once. This motion passed as well. And finally, um, a reduction of six hundred and fifty-five thousand from the Animus River Trail Santa Rita to CR two ten. Um, and that motion passed as well. And the two thousand nineteen, um, sales tax capital projects mid-year adjustment, most motion passed unanimously as well. And finally, the financial advisory board did also review sewer capital and water capital and both of those, um, amendments and motions passed unanimously. So looking at the position requests, um, we have these broken out by what department they report to. And so in the city attorney's office, this is moving an executive assistant to a full-time position, um, an open space parks ranger, um, to assist the, uh, newly implemented program that started in the twenty twenty-three budget as well as the police technician, which is a split between transportation and our, uh, police force. For public works, um, they are requesting a utility design manager, which this position will solely focus on completing capital projects. And in transportation, there is a request to increase, um, a facilities technician as a reclassification um, to a senior facilities maintenance tech. So looking at the net effect on the fund balances, um, I apologize for the small text. We do have, um, quite a few funds. But what we are reflecting here is that the beginning budgetary, um, fund balance followed by the twenty twenty-three adopted revenues, the revenue amendments, and then the twenty twenty-three amended revenues. We also show the twenty twenty-three adopted expenditures. We also show the two thousand and twenty three adopted expenditures. We show the expenses and the amendments to date. So this is every amendment that the city has brought to city council to date. Followed by the changes in fund balance and then the estimated ending fund balance with the amendments. So you so counsel, the public can see that there is sufficient fund balance. To cover the amendments that are requested in this evening's budget amendment. So finally, it is the recommendation that city council by motion approve the budget resolution for two thousand and twenty three for the city of Durango. And I can take any questions from counsel.
Okay. Question, motion, questions?
Usually we.
You do. You need a motion on the floor before you would discuss that you've already had public comment.
Yes, we've already had a public comment under item four earlier. Seven, close. And so do we have a motion?
I move to approve the two thousand and twenty three budget amendments as outlined in the slide.
Second.
Okay, counsel discussion.
I, oh, sorry, I'm really quick. The the one million dollars that's going to be taken out of the Smart one sixty corridor to be used for the pickleballs. That is because we're not expecting the timeline to be for it to be started or any work to be done in two thousand and twenty three. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Do we anticipating, are we anticipating getting that money back or reallocating or? Getting a million dollars back into that fund for the Smart one sixty that's dedicated to that project?
Yes, I do have Scott here as well, but I believe the plan was for that to move forward into two thousand and twenty four.
That'd be great.
Good evening, Scott McLean, the interim Parks and Recreation Director. So yes, the thought was that we're not making progress right now with the easement on the land. So let's free up some of that money to help cover the other cost. And then I'm sure usually we would need the additional funds to complete the construction of the project. Any other questions for me while I'm up here?
Pretty cut and dried. So thanks.
Five minutes.
Okay.
Any other counselors?
Yep, I have a question on the Smart one sixty. Reallocation of funds. Okay, so it was my understanding that. Sometimes we let money sit in these accounts so we can accumulate enough to continue with the project. Is that also what's going to happen with the Smart one sixty? What is the total budget for the Smart one sixty?
We are still working on getting the center section to a design where we've got a budget for that centerpiece. So. We had four point two million in the current budget. And that's some time has passed since we put that budget together, but that's that's where we would go at this point.
Okay, so we're we went from. Four million down to zero in that account.
Well, we reduced it by a million, so we had three point two million in that account at this point.
Alrighty, I just want a clarification because I'm really concerned that. You know, we need to start. Considering Reese Springs as part of. Our financial outlook here at the city of Durango.
That's a very good question, Counselor Yasi. And I think we're we're trying to say from staff is. We're taking this million this year because we're not going to be able to encumber and finish that project this year as there's still work that to be done. With a landowner as well, I believe, for to do so. So we are anticipating to pick this up once we have that part established. But since this project is not going to be able to be completed this year, we're moving it over for the Schneider Park to so that can be completed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'll start with a quick supportive note that my comments are not associated with pickleball courts at Snyder Park either. But let's start on the budget and management. And it appears we are mixing actual numbers. Beginning of the year with updated year to date numbers, and we're doing it inconsistently. So when we start each year with the forecasted fund balance. That is the basis for expenses and the budget. And then midyear, we have the audited results for the prior year. So in July, the auditor report came through. So then we have the actual fund that balanced for the beginning of the this year, so we can make adjustments to the budget. So as an example, if we started the twenty three twenty three budget with a fifty million dollar forecast. But in July, the audited results show a sixty million fund balance. That means we would have ten million dollars more to spend midyear for additional appropriations. Sure, we have projects. The other approach is to use actual year to date amounts based on midyear financial results. And which we see here partially because we have shown in the presentation, not maybe not, but in the agenda package, the increased interest revenue. But we didn't increase or update the actual revenue year to date for others such as sales, sales tax, property tax, et cetera. Compared to the initial budget. So on one side, we do interest revenues, but the other side, we don't include it. And it's the same with expenses. We see appropriations for additional costs and new projects, but we do not see the projects that. We are currently aware of midyear that are not taking place in this year, go back into the fund balance. We just keep adding expenses. And it's important because we budget for a very high amount of capital projects, fifty sixty million. And we only complete over the past years, a very small percentage of that or portion of that. So my first concern is about the way we do these budget dimensions and which approach we are taking. Do we take the actual numbers? Based on an audit, going back to the beginning of the year. Or we do, do we use midyear numbers? For as far as we know, interest rate was up, sales tax, maybe we're not a hundred percent sure of. And then update the midyear. And to me, we it needs to be one or the other, and we have to apply consistently. So all the revenues goes in. And all the expenses get updated or or we don't. So that is the first comment I have, and it's a little bit in line with one of the community members that spoke up. The other one I have is in your agenda package, it states regularly. These appropriations have been reviewed and recommended by the Financial Advisory Board. So I personally really would like to see that reworded into the financial aspects only have been reviewed by the Finance Advisory Board. Because besides discussion on pickleball courts and during the next steps. They had some discussion on those. They're they are primarily discussing which fund, which sales tax, which source of revenue pays for a certain project under which umbrella does it fall? We don't have citizens advisory boards or working groups that review and provide counsel. With advice and recommendations on improvements, programs, maintenance, expansion rates and use of facilities. That fell under the umbrella of the multimodal advisory board, Parks and Rec Advisory Board and the infrastructure advisory board, which all have been dissolved. And just in practical terms, in my opinion, it's impossible to have that level of review, which actually the content of these projects and prioritization. For about a hundred projects. Done by a financial advisory board, which has been in existence for two months. And they only had what a handful of meetings, less than ten, I think. So. I think we're missing that part in the. Prioritization and the review of these 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 projects. I probably touched upon my five minutes. Oh, I have one more comment, but I'll do that in three minutes.
Devin, all these projects that have come forward for reappropriation and such, they were all under all the other advisory boards, weren't they? They've been discussed before the advisory boards were.
So for the Parks and Recreation and multimodal, I believe they did go through their priority prioritization ranking. Allison would have to remind me on I A B, she's getting ahead now that it was a guess. So all of those did go through the ranking process.
Perfect. And then for the reduction, the six hundred and fifty five thousand reduction from the art. What was that supposed to be for? What are? Santa Rita. Oh, and it's going to Santa Rita, but where was like, where did that come from? Sorry, Scott.
So similar situation to what we had with Smart one sixty, and then we've got three sections of old asphalt trail that are being design engineered right now. But the sequencing with construction, we're not going to see that section is from Santa Rita Park, the south side down to County Road two ten or Nature's Oasis. Construction will be ready or don't be prepared until next year.
Okay, excellent. I want to say the. The comments that the Fab made during the Fab or the our Financial Advisory Board made during their meeting. When they talked about the Schneider Park Pickleball Project. And how it's not just a pickleball project, which is super great and fully support. But it's also a revitalization of that park, and it is so close to downtown, and I'm super excited, hopefully, to see. You know, that come to life and see what that part can be. My boys and I ride, you know, through there every every week almost. And so that is super exciting to me. And then also how so many of these projects touch on the vision in our strategic plan of being a multi generational community. Obviously, pickleball, if you just look here, very multi generational, but then you look at the toe, big toe, little toe at Chapman Hill. And so it's just, it's super exciting to see some of these projects coming to fruition. So thank you so much for your work on this. Okay, so we have another round of three minutes. Counselor Yasi wants to.
This won't take three minutes, but I just want to mention the fact that I have been attending the Fab meetings. Only because I was concerned with the elimination of the previous boards and with that. Their their budget committees. Amongst the whole multitude of boards. Okay, so I've been going to those meetings and understanding how they've been trying to put together. Their recommendations from all these projects with maybe what nine members there trying to filter through. And from the very beginning, it Devon was there. Remember, we were down at the rec center for the first meeting. And at first, it looks like they were stumbling, but the last meeting, what was it Monday evening? I can't remember when it was, but it was just recently, but. It looked like they they figured out how to view all these items. And so for the first year, they'll probably stumble along and. Figure out how to work together in this new format, but I think next year it'll probably be a little bit more functional. And they'll be able to work a little bit more coordinated with. Devin and the financial team here. So I just wanted to say that since there was a concern here that since we eliminated all the committees that. Maybe we didn't have a lot of input, but from what I saw. I thought that the leadership there on the team did a decent job of trying to get the issues out there. Mind you, I didn't agree with all the decisions, but you know, they did a good job in organizing it.
I just want to say thanks for putting some creative thought about how we can rebudget to kind of get some wins with both the pickleball courts and. How do we re envision what the Smart one sixty quarter, knowing that we can't really do anything this year in two thousand and twenty three, but how do we make sure that we see that project come to completion? So. I'm in full support. I really like that we're we're keeping the eyes on the prize and making sure that we're doing everything we can to. Get some easy wins. So. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, I first I on the on as a follow up to yours, I'm not sure if you saw. Just to follow up on yours, on the screen that you showed Devon, the total fund balance for the beginning of the year. For both sets of funds is a hundred and one million I saw, and we have, we are in an extremely. Good financial position as a city. So my my next comment is on the property exchange within appropriation for three point five million for the nine R building as part of the. Also exchanging giving the River City Hall. That was the negotiations were completed and we had a public hearing on the agenda on July eighteenth. Since then, I'm not aware that counsel had a formal meeting or discussion with direction or decision. On how to finance that amount. And if there was, then please let me know. So I'm better informed. And I do not mean an expressed interest or opinion from a potential individual counselor during the one on one meeting on the phone. But in a proper setting for city council topics. Now, the reason I say this, this is in July. In April this year, council was presented with the lease purchase agreement associated with the energy performance contract. The lease and the energy performance contract is the project for solar panels, HVAC and changing light fixtures and water faucets. With better performing items. The financing of that energy performance contract went through a lease purchase agreement. And that's a long term financial commitment similar to a loan, but because it was structured as a lease. It did not require voter involvement, so no ballot language. Now, the cost for that tax, the cost to taxpayers for that lease purchase agreement is an additional approximately two million dollars in interest and setup fees. And that passed at the time, but at the same time, in April. Counsel was informed that there is no money available. Now, this is, I think, best addressed to the city manager. Can you please explain what happened between April and now? For us all of a sudden to have three point five million dollars available. While we didn't have any availability in April, that could have saved us about two million dollars in interest and loans, lease setup fees.
They're two different projects. So that's that's one portion of it. We had a. Long presentation on the energy performance contract. There's plenty of public comments and presentations that you can go through there. So I would ask to. For you to see the staff presentations again and revisit those. And there was the information on there. As far as the three point five coming from the general fund balance, that was absolutely presented in the public hearing in my PowerPoint in this public meeting. That said, that was the intent of where the funding would to come from.
So in April, was there money available or?
He had thirty seconds left when he asked the question. So.
Thirty seconds.
So just to clarify, in April, there was no money available. Now there is.
I don't believe we said there was no money available, sir. I would. That's why I'm saying let's, I mean respectfully to go back to that presentation, which was presented to the council several times. There are different opportunities and options that were considered. Marty made his recommendation and it was approved by the city council.
Yeah, I'm I'm very sure that that was said. So if maybe there would be some staff member that wants to listen to the meetings. I think that would be beneficial because we ended up spending two million dollars in interest and set of fees, and that's. Very unfortunate taxpayers' money.
Agree to disagree.
Okay. All right. That is all for discussion. We're going to move on to a vote.
Counselor Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Woodford?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Dule?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman?
Yes.
Yes.
So we're going to move along in the agenda. I don't know if we'll take maybe a two minute recess if you guys want to. You don't want to stay for the meeting. We'll just take a two minute recess. So we're going to move along in the agenda. I don't know if we'll take maybe a two-minute recess if you guys want to, you don't want to stay for the meeting. We'll just take a two-minute recess. All right, we're going to move on. No reading of first ordinances. So we're skipping items twelve. We have item thirteen, public comment on non-agenda items. Do we have any non-agenda item public comment? Okay, do I need to read the public comment thing again? Public participation, this section of the agenda set aside for the public to provide comments or ask questions regarding items that are not on the agenda earlier on. City council will not respond to questions from the dais. Citizens should address their comments directly to the city council. As this is a hybrid meeting, the avenues for public participation have been adjusted. All written comments received by city clerk by noon today have been delivered to council and will be summarized in the meeting minutes. So we have John Simpson.
Mayor Pro Tembule, John Simpson still. Just want to give you a little feedback on how things went tonight. You have a new meeting agenda, new meeting format. You know, I was forced to speak on three items at the beginning before hearing staff presentation. There was a lot of information in there I could have helped out on. You know, I think as a council, you should consider instead of making your citizens guess what staff is going to present. Go ahead and let staff present and then allow the citizens to speak. You'll get better information. That's how things used to be done around here before these new rules came into place. So I hope you consider that. I think I could have done a better job instead of guessing what was going to go on here tonight. I could have spoken more accurately. So please consider that. And then the pushing the public participation now to the end. I think this should be put to the front instead of making people sit around. Because we don't have advisory boards anymore. We have one advisory board. Go ahead and put that public participation, this this thing right here up at the beginning. And then people can come speak to you, go home, have dinner with their kids or whatever. So a couple hopefully it's positive criticism that could be changed moving forward.
Thank you. Is there any online part, public participation?
Uh, yes, mayor, we have Jessica Nab who would like to speak.
Excellent.
Hello, my name is Jessica Nab. I want to express my disappointment. Hello, my name is Jessica Nab. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
I want to express my disappointment that Durango's council has prioritized an out-of-state special interest group over your own constituent Joyce Cohen. A city council is elected to represent its own citizens, not paid lobbyists who have no genuine interest in your city. You have failed to do your job and I employ implore you to make it right and reconsider the preventative pet store ordinance. Pan, who you decided to listen to over your own constituent is based in Virginia and they are advocating for the CCC, which was formed in Indiana for the purpose of improving standards for their puppy mills. The CCC original funding all came from groups with monetary interest in puppy mills and it is now donation based. It references that their breeders must be USDA licensed, but many are not. The one breeder cited with a testimonial on their own website is not USDA certified. The goal of the CCC is to have more socialized dogs, but they do not use animal behavior specialists for audits. They use Validus for audits, which is a food and produce inspection company, which has nothing to do with animal behavior. They do not disclose their audit audits to the public. There is no transparency and no record of methods used. There are no inspection reports with the CCC and no list of trained unbiased professionals performing the audits. Additionally, CCC mills set their own veterinarians and their own pay rates, which is absolutely not an unbiased practice. There are pet stores in Colorado Springs that use the CCC puppy mills and they receive constant backlash and protests from the public. The CCC has no enforcement authority. It is simply an expectation. Again, that is zero enforcement through the CCC. You have been misled to believe that more enforcement on pet stores would solve this issue. I ask you, who's going to be doing that enforcement? Since the CCC does not have enforcement, did you intend on creating an enforcement team? Who will be paying them and with what budget and money? By listening to special interest groups, you have failed to understand the implication of your decision to not enact a preventative pet store ordinance. You referenced legal ramifications, but Joyce is very well experienced and has passed over ten ordinances and none of those have ever had legal ramifications. Joyce is extremely intelligent and capable citizen that you have opted not to listen to. Mancos just passed an ordinance and for you to not be following in the footsteps of them is backwards. You should be leading the way on this issue and setting the example. Please reconsider the preventative pet store ordinance that you initially agreed to.
Thank you, Jessica. Okay, I'm going to close. Is there any other virtual?
Uh, no, there's no other virtual commenters.
Excellent. I will close public comment. Onto item fourteen, introduction of ordinances and requests for public hearing. We have fourteen point one, discussion and possible action concerning an ordinance amending chapter eleven, health and sanitation article four, stream pollution and the municipal code pertaining to waste and flash flood exposure within public stream repairing zones and flayed plumes by adding section eleven point seven or eleven dash seven four unlawful presence and activities as follows. Mister, do you want to?
Yeah, I've been working with the administration on this legislation, which is intended for public safety and water quality. The full draft ordinance has been provided at the time of this meeting. And tonight I'm requesting the previa motion to introduce and set the matter for a public hearing and consideration at the next regular meeting.
Do I have a motion?
So moves.
Is there a second? Okay, any council discussion?
This is only for having a public hearing.
Correct. The appropriate time for any in-depth type question would be at the next meeting where the first reading and the public hearing would take place.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can I have a roll?
Need any further rationale? I'm happy to provide it. If you need something beyond what I said before. I'm happy to give more detail. We're not trying to hide anything. We just, we're going to have a full-blown discussion on it at the next meeting.
Well, I'll give you the heads up. I I was just wondering about housing and residence along rivers and streams or people walking pets along the river. That's all I had.
Sure.
Okay, anything else? Roll call?
Councillor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembule?
Yes.
Councillor Yasi?
Yes.
Mayor Yusef is absent. Councillor Bosman?
Yes.
All right, moving on. Item fifteen, other new business. This is limited discussion. Any councillor have any other new? Okay, moving on to number sixteen, other matters. Sixteen point one, request for excused absences. Any?
Actually, I do. It's a little bit ahead of time, but I might as well, since we have it here. The city council meeting of October second falls in line with the International City County Managers Conference, which I do plan to attend as well be speaking at in regards to citizen engagement. So asking for my absence for the October second city council meeting to be excused.
Excellent. Do we vote on that or do we just say yes?
Yeah, you need to, for him in particular, you need a vote.
Okay, perfect. Do we have a motion first?
His motion, he's requesting an excuse to absence for the dates that he mentioned that I wasn't paying attention to.
I move that Jose be excused from his October second meeting, regular city council meeting and study session.
And I'll second.
Any council discussion? Can we have a vote?
Councillor Bosman?
Yes.
Mayor Yusef is absent. Councillor Yasi?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembule?
Yes.
Councillor Woodruff?
Yes.
Okay, sixteen point two directives. None. Okay. Sixteen point three, discussion and possible action to reinstate the appointment of a board ethics member who was previously appointed during the July fifth, twenty twenty-three city council regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
So let me give me a little explanation first.
Great, sorry.
This is kind of a presentation without a slideshow, but this was kind of, I've never run into this before, but you guys appointed Tam Nomoto to your ethics board. I met with her after the appointment, extremely qualified lady who spends time both in California and in Durango. She has an appointment with the California Supreme Court in some judicial role in California. That was a potential conflict for her serving on the ethics board here out in California. She went through a process in California to clear that conflict. We got an initial opinion about it and then we got a final opinion about it from the Colorado Supreme, the California Supreme Court. So what we did was we declared a vacancy while that was pending, but we didn't move to fill the vacancy because we knew that we were waiting on this ruling to happen. So she has been officially cleared by the California Supreme Court to sit on the ethics board. And I thought the best way to handle that was to explain it tonight and then request a motion that her appointment, that she be reappointed and confirmed as the fifth member of the ethics board.
Excellent. Do I have a motion?
I move to appoint
Am, yeah.
Tam Nomoto. Nomoto, back to the board of ethics.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, can I have a vote?
Councillor Woodruff?
Yes.
Councillor Yasi?
Yes.
Councillor Bosman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembule?
Yes.
Mayor Yusef is absent.
Okay, sixteen point four. Discussion and possible action concerning a motion to approve the settlement of a case concerning the application of water rights filed by Rebecca Schwartz and Kevin Padres in the Florida River watershed specifically two zero two two CW two zero one eight in La Plata County District Court. Sir Morgan?
So as it was fully disclosed when I was hired for this job, I'm from Louisiana and don't know a whole lot about water rights. I was happy to learn that we do have an attorney who is famous throughout the state of Colorado and an expert in wider water rights who has been servicing the city. This matter is something we could have put in the executive session, but because of the the negligible impact of the settlement to the suit, there was nothing strategy wise that needed to take place in executive session. And we are making an effort to do as much as we can outside of executive session. Our attorney Fritz and his last name eludes me right now filed an objection to a water claim that that had the potential to impact the city's water supply. He did that in an abundance of caution upon going through that proceeding and meeting with the water referee, which is something we don't have in Louisiana. But it's a, it's a, it's a judicial process where they evaluate water rights. It was determined that the right that was being asserted and asserted, although we objected to it, ultimately would have no impact on the water supply to the city. We have rights in the Florida River that are absolute. This is a subservient right to that. And more than that, they determined that what the the applicant was actually requesting to do would have signif- almost no impact, if any impact at all on the city's water supply. So at this point, the procedure is to settle that. And in the past, that had been done just through the attorneys, I felt it was more appropriate to request a vote from you guys to approve the settlement, especially because it has no impact on the water supply in the city. So I would request that there would be a motion to approve the settlement as recommended by the Durango city's outside counsel, who is a specialist in water rights.
Excellent. Do I have a motion?
What are the terms of the settlement?
The settlement acknowledges the fact that the the water right that was being asserted will not impact the city's water supply. It's truly that simple. Yeah, but you don't know that at the beginning of the process, which is why the water rights attorney objected. And I do plan to meet with, I did meet with him for almost two hours this week. I plan to meet with him again. And I may come back to you with some kind of global authority to where we can resolve these minor suits that don't really have an impact without getting a vote each time. But I want to do my due diligence and make sure that I'm meeting my professional responsibilities before I would bring something like that to you. For right now, I just like with to have your approval because you're my client and I would never end a settlement without authority from my client.
Excellent. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the settlement of the case concerning the application of water rights filed by Rebecca Schwartz and Kevin Padres in the Florida River watershed specifically twenty twenty-two CW twenty eighteen in La Plata County District Court.
Second.
Any council discussion? All right, can we have a vote?
Councillor Yasi?
Yes.
Mayor Yusef is absent. Councillor Woodruff?
Yes.
Councillor Bosman?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tembule?
Yes.
Okay, and next we will move to item seventeen, executive sessions. We have three different executive sessions that we will be entering. I'm going to ask that we do three different motions. We vote on each motion and then we'll go into executive session. And then once all three conclude, we will reconvene back out here. Do I have a motion for seventeen point one?
I move to convene an executive session to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, sale or transfer of an interest in real property located in downtown Durango. Currently leased to the Durango and Silverton Narrow Gauge Railroad for parking and to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation and direct negotiators as permitted by CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four A and E.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I have a vote?
Councillor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembule?
Yes.
Councillor Yasi?
Yes.
Mayor Yusef is absent and Councillor Bosman?
Yes.
Hey, do we have a motion for seventeen point two?
I move to convene an executive session to receive legal advice regarding the possible litigation concerning the contract dispute involving JRC consulting as permitted by CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B.
Second.
Council discussion? All right, can I have a vote?
Councillor Bosman?
Yes.
Mayor Yusef is absent. Councillor Yasi?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembule?
Yes.
And Councillor Woodruff?
Yes.
And then a motion for seventeen point three?
I move to convene an executive session to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B concerning litigation titled John Simpson versus the City of Durango, twenty twenty-two CV three zero one one two filed in La Plata County District Court.
Second.
Council discussion? Can I have a vote?
Councillor Woodruff?
Yes.
Councillor Yasi?
Yes.
Councillor Bosman?
Yes.
Pro Tembule?
Yes.
You just need to note the time.
Oh, the time is six fifty-four PM and we will now go into executive session.
Yeah.
You did, you did that. Dave. Jimmy, what's your name?
Jerry.
Jerry.
You're good. Okay, the time is now eight twenty-one and the executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were.
Number.
In, okay, the, sorry, the participants in executive session one were Jose Madrigal.
Yozie.
Yozie, Jessica Buell, Dave Woodruff, Olivier Bosmans, Mark Morgan.
Sarah.
Sarah Hill and Aaron Hyder, A. Hyder. And then I say that for each one. Um, the participants in executive session two were Jose Madrigal, Gilda Yasi, Jessica Buell, Dave Woodruff, Olivier Bosmans, Mark Morgan, Sarah Hill, no.
Devin Schmidt.
Devin Schmidt. And Aaron A. Hyder. And the executive sessions, or the participants in the executive session three were Jose Madrigal, Gilda Yazi, Jessica Buell, Dave Woodruff, Olivier Bosmans, Mark Morgan, and Aaron Hyder. For the record, council met in executive session for three matters. Matter one, to receive. Matter one, to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, sale, transfer of an interest in real property located in downtown Durango currently leased to the Durango and Silverton Garanage Railroad for parking and a determined positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation and direct negotiators as permitted by CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two for A and E. For matter two. For, to receive legal advice regarding possible litigation concerning a contract dispute involving JRC Consulting as permitted by CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B. And for executive session three. To receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B concerning litigation titled John Simpson versus City of Durango twenty twenty-two CV three zero one one two filed in La Plata County District Court. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive sessions believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive site session in violation of the mo- open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing none. Um, we will go back to item seventeen point one.
Relative to item seventeen point one, it's my understanding after discussing um the policies and economic impacts of the city when considering the sale, potential sale or negotiation or lease of real estate, that the council is going to take no action at this time. Relative to item seventeen point two, it's my understanding um that the council has authorized me to move forward with negotiations in resolving that lawsuit or potential lawsuit um under the terms discussed in executive session. So at this time, I would request that there be a motion to authorize me to proceed with those negotiations as discussed.
So moved.
All second. Is.
This was.
This is matter seventeen point two involving the um potential litigation with JRC Consulting.
Is there any discussion? Can I have a vote?
Counselor Yazi.
Yes.
Mayor Yusef is absent. Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Buell?
Yes.
Relative to matter seventeen point three, it's my understanding after executive discussion discussing the potential financial impacts of litigation and other relevant matters concerning city policy that the city council would like me to enter into negotiations specifically relating to the legal fees involved in that matter. Um, I'm requesting a motion to move forward with the negotiation to attempt to resolve the legal fees in that matter and um request a vote to move forward under the terms discussed in executive session. So moved.
Second.
Discussion? We have a vote?
Counselor Bosmans?
No.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
And Mayor Yusef is absent.
Okay, that brings us to our last item adjournment.